Hello, everyone. My name is John McKay. I'm the Member of Parliament for Scarborough-Guilwood, and I'm joined by my friends and colleagues, Mitzi Hunter, a Member of Parliament, the Provincial Parliament for Scarborough-Guilwood, and Paul Ainsley, the Councillor for the area. We've been doing these virtual Town Halls for the last, I guess, what, two months now? And it's actually proved to be quite an interesting opportunity for us to communicate with our constituents. Last Town Hall we did, we had Mitzi, we had Mitzi, we had Mitzi all the time. We had Liz Baller from the Scarborough Health Network, and she talked about the preparedness of the Scarborough Health Network for any further outbreaks of COVID. So tonight, we thought we'd bring in some really intellectual heavyweights. We've got Andrea Hazel and Mike Williams, who are joining us to talk about the economic climbout from our healthcare crisis. And they're going to focus on Scarborough and the things that need to be done. But before I introduce Mike and Andrea, I'm going to ask Mitzi and Paul to say a word or two about whatever it is they're going to say a word or two about.
Well, hello, everyone. It's really great to be back again for our virtual Town Hall with John McKay and Paul Ainsley. And really, this is an opportunity for us to update you on what is happening with the pandemic in Scarborough and the economic recovery that is ahead. As you know, most of the province has moved into stage three of the recovery, and we are waiting on Toronto and Scarborough to move into stage three. And this is something that is important for our economic recovery. So I'm really looking forward to our guests Andrea and Mike on their take on what we need to do to make sure that we have strong Scarborough recovery. So thank you so much for joining us. Over to you, Paul.
Thank you. Thanks, Mitzi. Thank you, John. It's great to be here, as always. I think our Town Halls really speak to the dedication that all three of us have to our community here in Scarborough-Guilwood. I think we're going to have a great discussion this evening. I'm looking forward to the questions from our residents as we talk about our economic recovery. I know that Andrea is the President of the Scarborough Business Association, has been leading Cyber Breakfast every Wednesday morning that have been very well received with a wide range of people on different topics. There's one this Wednesday morning with Minister Rod Phillips that's going to be talking about the provincial perspective at the city. I want to thank Michael Williams, our General Manager of Economic Development, for being with us this evening as he talks about the programs and initiatives that we have at the municipal level, also with the support of the provincial and federal government as we work at getting our economy back on its feet and supporting our businesses. So I want to thank everybody for listening this evening.
Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Mitzi. And I have to say that when we talked earlier about who we should have to talk about the economic recoveries in Toronto and Scarborough, both your names just jumped off the page as far as Mitzi and Paul were concerned. So I too am looking forward to the conversation. I'm going to introduce Andrea, then I'm going to introduce Mike, and then I'm going to lead on with a question to Andrea. So Andrea apparently has been in the financial sector for three decades. I'm starting to think that maybe you started when you were 14 years old. My goodness. And she's Chair of the Caribbean Philanthropic Council, has been for five years. And then in an exquisite point of timing, became the President of the Scarborough Business Council on November 2019. Watch what you're thinking about. My goodness. So this has been a huge challenge for her. I'm going to get her to talk about the Scarborough Business Council and take note, however, that she has started because she has nothing better to do. She started a new company called Winspire General Financial Solutions. So we are very fortunate to have you here, Andrea, and we're looking forward to what you have to say.
Thank you.
Mike is with the city. He is with the Toronto Economic Development Strategy Collaboration for Competition and its Cultural Plan Creative Capital Game. I'd like to see Mike's business card. Like, how do you get all that on your business card, Mike? My goodness gracious, me. Eminently qualified, has been with the city for quite a number of years, is an MA in urban geography and is a Certified Management Consultant. And both of our guests tonight have serious experience in financial matters and in economic matters. And I'm going to start with Andrea. Andrea, I'm interested in knowing what the Scarborough Business Association's mandate is and what kind of support it can give to both established businesses and nascent businesses. And in this environment, what are its challenges? And if you could expand into the challenges that uniquely you see for Scarborough businesses.
And so, thank you, John. Thank you for having me. And so, the mandate of SBA, actually, we started in 2015. And so, we had three mandates to advocate on behalf of Scarborough, just be that voice of Scarborough. Where there's policy changes, topics that is relevant to the business is going to support the business expansion growth. We have opportunities for education. We help with the prosperity. And we have a wide range of networking activities. And so, that is all in plan before the pandemic started. And so, we had a really very successful After Five event whereby we invited a lot of our business members in Scarborough. And we will have a restaurant that we support every total week of the month. And so, we would have almost like 50 to 60 business members coming out of that After Five networking event. And so, that took off really well. We also had our education sessions, which we had every other month. And just like we have with our Cyber Breakfast webinars, now we have to take it in the cyber world. And so, we also were faced with challenges as an organization. We are a non-for-profit organization. So all of our events that generate revenue for us, we couldn't do those in 2020. And so, every organization, I think, in Scarborough, whether it's a business, an association, an organization, we are all impacted in every way. And so, you know, we've started a task force. It's called COVID-19 Task Force. Because, as I said, we at the SBA, we are very brilliant people. We were challenged with...
And also, apparently, very modest people as well. Hey, who knew?
Yes. Yes. We were very challenged with how we're going to stay relevant in a pandemic. And we were worried that in this pandemic, how are we going to be supporting and carrying out our mandate to our Scarborough businesses, knowing that everything is going to be 95% online? And so, that's why we came up with our Cyber Breakfast. We took off from mid-March. We haven't stopped. And we are in our 18th Cyber Breakfast webinar, right? We had all different levels of government on the forefront. Second, we have dedicated our website as a resource because all information was coming down fast and furious during the pipeline. And what we were hearing from our businesses is, whoa, there's a lot of information out there. We don't even know where to go to get these information. So we have dedicated our website. We have about 19 to 20 links of different information that came from different levels of government, how you access different funding. The gaps that we were hearing from our businesses around March, April, and May was the rent situation with their landlord. They needed help. And, you know, the landlord was not, I guess, understanding the funding situation. And so, what we were doing is connecting these businesses to our councillors, our MPPs and MPs in the area to have that kind of resolution happening. We did not leave any businesses unattended. We think of it very seriously.
Yeah. What was your biggest surprise in dealing with? You obviously were in March, and everybody's in up to their neck on this. And before I turn it over to Mike, I just want to get a feeling from you, what you were thinking in March, and now you're in July. What was your biggest surprise as far as supporting businesses in Scarborough?
So my biggest surprise of supporting businesses in Scarborough from March, our businesses were just collecting information, and everybody was just shocked at the economy shutting down. And so, everybody was spinning wheels and getting the right information and knowing who to go to. And so, that's what we resolved first. Now, is we are teaming up, and I'm hoping I'm not letting this out of the hat too fast. We are now moving forward into phase three. And even though we're not in phase three, we are rolling our sleeves up and we have joined Councillor Jennifer McKelvey, UTSC, the Bridge, Centennial College. We're supporting the restaurants. They are hardest hit. So even though we have, I think it's Toronto Cafe TO, that is now giving $2,500 to support the business technology, reputational management for the restaurants and the website. They do not know the how. They don't even know how to start. And so, that's where we are going to get in the grounds. Scarborough Bridge has done wonderful surveys with these restaurants and found out that education is a key part.
Well, let's go over to Mike, who has probably got something to say about Toronto moving from stage two to stage three. So you heard what Andrea had to say. She's obviously representing the business side of the community. They want to get back to business, generating revenue, generating activity. And I'm imagining, Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you might have something to say about what are the criteria for Toronto to move out of its present stage into a more robust economic environment? It'd be better if you took yourself off mute, Mike.
It would be a lot better if I was on. Well, you'll judge. You might would prefer that I stayed on mute.
My kids like me on mute. I know that.
So I think the most important thing, first of all, is to realize that we're in a very serious health crisis and that the first thing that comes that we have to ensure is safety and health. So everything that we do has to be with an eye on making sure that we beat COVID and we don't spread it around. So the longer it's in the community, the longer it's a big threat, the longer the business challenges will be. So that the best solution from a business perspective is for us to beat COVID. And it's not going to go away entirely until we have a treatment and until we have a vaccine. But certainly, in the meantime, let's not give it a chance to come roaring back like it has in many places where they thought they'd beat it. I was talking to my person in the same position I am in Melbourne, Australia. They had no COVID 10 weeks ago. And now, they're having twice as many cases a day as we are in Ontario and Toronto. But in terms of the businesses and what we can do to help support them, I think the first thing we need to do is build from the very, very local community. Get each community comfortable with going outside. Get each community comfortable with going to their main streets and their shopping centers and their parks safely with masks. And so, get comfortable. Because the surveys that I've seen would indicate that there are still many people out there, maybe even half the population. It's all, it's a little reluctant, you know? They got used to being safe in their own home, and now to go out. So we're going to be announcing some programs over the next month to encourage community interaction. We are very strong supporters of what Andrea's just talking about, the Find or Find the Restaurant Program in Scarborough, in partnership with all the people that Andrea said. We also have other programs like Digital Main Street to encourage small businesses to become competent on the web. And that's being strongly supported by both the federal and provincial governments. Also, Shop Here, which is helping retailers create a presence on the web. Again, strongly supported by both governments as well as the City of Toronto. Cafe TO, which Andrea mentioned, is a program to help restaurants get more patio space if they need it. That is not as much of a challenge in parts of Scarborough as it is in other parts of the city where there's more private and parking lot adjacent to restaurants in Scarborough. But I agree with Andrea that people need to know how to navigate all the different programs. And on our website, we also, as SBA, have a number of tools. So we have listings. We have webinars that feature how businesses can cope with COVID, both locally, you know, in their store or, as I talked about, going online. We have chatbots, which allow you to ask a question of a computer. The computer gives you an answer if it can, and about 80% of the time, it can get the right answer to you. And then we have a voice call-in service called Advice TO, which would put you in touch with a business advisor. But most of the work they've been doing so far, John, is to help navigate provincial programs, federal programs, and city programs. So that, I think, the more that small business especially can learn how to leverage all of these tools out there, the better off we're going to be. The city is there for you. You have very active councillors in Scarborough, which is great to see. Councillor Ainsley made sure that our Cafe TO support programs were available for restaurants that were not in business improvement areas, which are mostly outside of Scarborough, so that individual restaurants can get the support.
This is getting to be way too much of a love-in between the city and the business and then Councillor Ainsley. I have to say that Councillor Ainsley has primed you very well, Mike. So Andrea.
You just answered on the...
Yeah. Well, let me just, before I catch you, Paul. Andrea, where is the point of friction? If there is a point of friction between the city and what could be done better? Because I agree with Mike that, you know, there's a lot of programs out there, and all levels of government, by and large, have worked well together. Hence, our, you know, our regular podcast here with Mitzi and Paul. So what could we be doing better? I'd be interested in both Mike's answer and Andrea's answer. And then I'll turn it over to Mitzi and Paul to see what they've got to say on the comments that you've already made. So Mike or Andrea?
Yeah. So I can go on that from my perspective, John. Thank you for that question. And that's a really good question. Hearing from the business on the grounds, there are great programs out there from all the different levels of government. Amazing program to help the businesses move forward in a recovery stage. What is not there is, within all these great programs, there is not a lot of us saying and reaching out to these businesses and saying, this is how you need to apply for this program. Let me break it down for you. The businesses does not have a lot of resources to look into and drill down into these programs and the know-how and the application. And some of the applications, from the business perspective, from what I've heard, I haven't gone in through to all the applications, so I cannot validate this. But it's somewhat cumbersome. And so, maybe if we can have that, I don't know if in the, I was told, the chat box, if there can be a communication on how to fill out each application as a guide. And so, I know we have talked about housing all the important grants and funding from all the different levels of government, just on one site. Here is where you need to go for SIBA. Here is how you fill out the SIBA application, and so forth. And so, I think we need to, now we're going into phase three, I think we need to revisit the programs and streamline it.
Yeah, Mike, I miss... Yeah, go ahead. Sorry, I just wanted to see what Mike agreed with.
Yeah. So not just, you know, to the downtown main street, but think about the urban, the Scarborough community. How can we benefit more from that? Because all of our communities are coming from a different place of doing business.
Mike, what's your reaction to that?
Well, I mean, I agree that more people should, we can always do a much better job than we're doing in getting people to understand how they can apply to programs, and we have services to do that. And I'll make sure that we do a better job of reaching people in Scarborough. We have an office in the, well, there used to be at Scarborough Civic Centre. They're at home right now. But they're very focused on Scarborough businesses. Neil Farmer and Ian Brown are huge supporters and have worked with SBA and others there. The other aspect, John, to answer your question, is most businesses need financial assistance. And so, anything that the feds and the province can do to help small business, we at the city, as you know, we're having our own financial challenges, and we don't have the ability to borrow, to solve operating challenges. So our financial support is very, very limited to small grants around the Digital Main Street, and that money actually comes from the province and the feds. So any opportunity to support small business with financial backing is, I think, the most important element to most small businesses that I speak to. And then, are you clear? And how do I fill out SERVA? How do I fill out SECRA? How do I fill out all the different support programs that are out there? So there's more to be done, and we need to do it.
Thank you both for that. Let me turn it over to Mitzi and Paul as to whether they've got any commentary or questions on both what Andrea and Mike have said. Mitzi?
Yeah. Well, I really like the fire that I hear from Andrea for programs that are available provincially and citywide to have a unique consideration in terms of how it applies and how businesses in the Scarborough context can benefit from it. I think it's extraordinarily important because the types of businesses that we have here and the needs are unique to the Scarborough context and the Scarborough experience. So I love the advocacy, Andrea, and I support you. And let's do what we can to be as loud as possible to the federal, provincial, and municipal governments on behalf of the Scarborough business community. So I'm thrilled about that. I do want to share just some information on where businesses can find one-stop information eventually, because I recognize that there are differences in what is available and who qualifies. And in some instances, there are businesses who are not able, even though we are on the cusp of stage three, there will be businesses that will not be able to move into stage three. And some of them have been contacting my office to find out why. So, you know, anything where the mouth and the face contact is too close will not be able to move into stage three, for instance. So the 800 number is 1-888-444-3659. And I would encourage companies that want to understand what the provincial guidelines are for opening to be able to contact that number. Because one of the things that Mike said that is very important, and we are seeing this, it's not just unique to Scarborough or Toronto, and that is the, it's actually not even unique to Ontario or Canada. It is a phenomenon that is happening in many places around the world, and that is the confidence of customers and the public to come back and to use services the way that they were prior to COVID. That confidence has not come back yet. And in order for us to have an economic recovery that is lasting, we need to be able to boost that confidence. And one of the ways in which to boost confidence is for businesses to demonstrate that they are following public health guidelines, that the first priority is to keep themselves and their staff safe. Those employees are the ones that are going to be, you know, conveying that confidence in your establishment. And then for customers to feel that, you know, people are wearing masks, the hand sanitizers and the PPE is being used effectively, and we're following physical distancing and those types of recommendations that are essential. As Mike has said, the virus is still here, and it's still a risk. In places like Scarborough, I checked the Toronto Public Health Interactive Map to see where we are. Scarborough is still very much a COVID hotspot, if you would, compared to the rest of the city and province. And so, we still have to be vigilant about contact and how that happens to make sure that we contain the spread of the virus. But I'm also very confident in the creativity, in the hard work, and in the resilience of our business community here in Scarborough and, of course, our residents in Scarborough who support our local businesses here. And I know that we will come out of this together, but we still have to work together. We still have to have that Scarborough pride and that sense of community.
Paul, have you got any commentary on whether what Mike or Andrea, or for that matter, Mitzi, have said?
Well, I think in terms of technology, just to kind of supplement what Mike was talking about and also to address what Andrea outlined, at the municipal level of the City of Toronto, one of the things that we've really learned from COVID is that people, you know, really need technology and to use technology better, especially in the business community. We started a program called Digital Main Street in 2016 with the Toronto Association Business Improvement Areas, or TAVIA, to assist businesses in their development in working online, improving their business platform. Just in the past few months, we've had a multi-departmental program where we're looking at businesses applying for their licenses or renewing their licenses, any type of communication with the City of Toronto that you used to do, have to go in line up or, you know, go down to Metro Hall and stand in line for a couple hours to pay a fee. We're doing that all online. We're rolling that out. We've come to realize that people, much like in their private life where they want to click and order, buy groceries, order food, and have things sent to their house, that we need to support our business community in the same way. To address one of Andrea's concerns, for the past couple of years now, I've been really trying to push at the City of Toronto because our business improvement areas are, by and large, we only have two of them in Scarborough. There's none whatsoever in southeastern Scarborough. We have many different partnerships with our BIAs financially that you don't get with the business association. And I think when you look at the makeup of businesses in Scarborough, many of them are family-owned small businesses that really can't get involved the way our BIAs are structured now. But they need more support than you're going to get from your local business association, if that's what they decide to do. And I think we need, at the municipal level, to find stronger ways to support our businesses in Scarborough financially when it comes to that partnership. And I think that also includes reaching out to the federal and provincial government as well, and particularly when you look at COVID and the huge detrimental impact it's had on our business community here in Scarborough.
Thanks, John. So, okay. So with that, maybe we could just go to more general questions. And let me ask one, particularly of Andrea. And that, and the issue that I've heard about is... is that the Canada, that the Government of Canada gives a $2,000 emergency benefit. And and, you know, it's a it's significant sum of money for some people. And for some employers, it infected creates a competitive disadvantage. Their their employees are in the, if you will, $15 to $20 range. People look at it and say, well, I can stay home and earn and have $2,000 or I can work 40 hours and, you know, have less money. So are you hearing that? And is it the kind of thing that the Government of Canada in particular should adjust? And I'd be interested in Mike's comments after Andrea's comments on that on that issue.
And so, yes, we we did hear a couple of that, not from a lot of businesses, to raise significant concerns. But the businesses that we did hear it from, the issue is out there, okay? Whereby the employees chose not to come back. And it could be, John, for the the $2,000 they are receiving, but we got to think about they are not ready to come back because there's still a health issue there. And so, you know, we 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 got to make sure that we are listening carefully and we're balancing both aspects. And so that is why in the month of August, what the SBA are doing is a community outreach. And so if you look at the storefront, that is a huge support of getting people back to work in Scarborough. UTSC, The Bridge, have a program where they've got their students ready to go into those businesses and really help them to support an an opening. And so those are the types of programs that businesses were inquiring about. We had an hour, about two weeks ago at breakfast, we had The Bridge, we had Centennial, we had Imran Ali from Nodden Smokes Restaurant. And he gave a compelling story of how the community came together and helped his shop to be reopened. And his story actually touched a lot of us. And when he can reach back to SBA and said, thank you for giving me this platform so I can share my success story on how the community has helped me to reopen. I am happy that you shared this platform. You give me a platform to share my story. And so, yes, it is there. The reality is there. But whether it is because of health, the employees are not okay coming back to work with. Maybe that is something that we have to get together and and increase the confidence with the employees of of our small mom and pop businesses in Scarborough.
Yeah, the the employers I've talked to are adhering to all of the protocols that have been published by the province and the and the city. And yet employees express a certain reluctance and some for good reason and maybe some for not so good reason. Mike, what's your reaction? John, mute, Mike?
I've been doing this for 12 weeks. You'd think, you know, more than that, 16 weeks.
You're not alone, Mike. You're not alone. I I chaired two days of meetings in Ottawa on, actually, an interesting subject, systemic racism and policing. And I could not get the mute and unmute working. I am pathetic. So, Mike, you and I are in the same category.
Well, we can be, we can be the basis of a club here.
That's right.
My 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 answer is pretty similar to Andrea's. We hear that. Especially people that are used to hiring summer, summer students or, you know, that they pay minimum wage and give a work experience. And some summer students are deciding that two grand for no work, it's easier than the same amount of money with work. But I I but I don't think that's, as Andrea said, I don't think that's a gigantic concern. I think it would be worse if there is no program to support people who don't have jobs, you know. So we have way too many unemployed right now in Scarborough and across Toronto. And so this kind of money prevents a calamitous situation. So I applaud
Do you do you offhand know what the unemployment rate is in Scarborough?
We don't collect, nobody collects that information in Scarborough. I have to believe it is at least as high as, if not, it's probably higher than the average in Toronto, which officially is around 14, 15%. But because a lot of people don't even register as looking for work because it's a hopeless situation. The real rate of unemployment is probably closer to 20% in Scarborough. It's huge.
And in some categories of people, very high. Mitzi, you wanted to jump in?
I do want to jump in here because I think there's an element that we have to speak to. And, you know, yes, it is about, you know, if people are getting an income, you know, while there's still a health situation. But part of the recovery is that we're not yet recovered. And so there are still parts of our systems that are not fully back in a consistent way. So, for instance, childcare is is not, not all the spaces are back or not, you know, people might not be as comfortable yet putting their their child in into the system. We know that women with school-aged children are not returning to pre-COVID employment levels at the same rate as men with school-aged children. This is something that we saw in the last Stats Canada update. And, you know, it's being called a she, a she-section because women were were relatively more hit by the recession and are slower to come back. And and so, you know, the state of our school system and whether or not we're going back to five days a week or staying at home with online learning or a combination of a hybrid is still a big question and creates some doubt and some uncertainty. And and I do think that these things are weighing on people's minds and and their decisions in terms of, you know, whether they're going to jump back in fully in terms of work. The one thing that I I hear, and I've done a couple of roundtables with small businesses and and with the restaurant community as well. And and one of the things that they've said is that the wage subsidy program that the federal government put out has been extremely well-designed and very, very helpful. And they they would like to see that continue. And I know that you have done so as well. So that's that's been something that they've said, keep that in place because that liquidity and 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 while things are coming back is really important to them.
It is. It is a dodgy business as to when the, you know, A, the government of Canada has finite resources. And we ran a massive deficit and, but, you know, the government of Canada is probably more capable of running a deficit than most households. Having said that,
And a very low interest rate, John.
Yes, it is actually a low interest rate. Well, that has something to do with the fact that we run a very, very tight ship in Ottawa, I have to say. Mike, your 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 reaction to to the issue of of minimum wage? And, well, let me switch questions here because one of the things that is always of concern is transit in Scarborough, always, always, always. We we hear that endlessly. So now the city has, sorry, the province has, quote unquote, taken over the Scarborough subway. Where are we at with the Scarborough East LRT? And do you feel comfortable answering the question?
Means a lot of things. So I I'm not comfortable from the knowledge perspective that I'm totally up to speed on that. I know that we just, the council is going to consider tomorrow a Lawrence Busway. And I think the focus continues to be by council on ensuring that Scarborough is well-connected to itself and to the rest of the city. So I don't see any wavering on that, but your your local councillor might have a view on that, John.
Well, I was I was going to go to the local councillor next. He might actually have a view and could give us a bit of an update. Because money is going to be tight, no question about it. And apparently, apparently it's just abundantly available. So, so Paul?
Not, money's not abundantly available at the, one of the biggest things I look at in the economy, and and Michael will vouch for it as well, is the amount of tax dollars when the the City of Toronto economy is kicking on all cylinders. The amount of money that we send in taxes provincially and federally out of the city
Oh, here we go.
Back is is a huge issue. And one of those issues is is around public transit. We have a three-stop subway that the provincial government has decided to expand from a one-stop subway. We had money set aside through the province for the Eglinton East LRT. We had some arrangements that were made. We also need the Ontario Line because the blurred Anfor subway in rush hour in particular is so heavily used. We have the the Relief Line, as we call it, which the province also expanded that as well. So one of the difficulties we have is that the current provincial government, every time they kick into one of these lines, is the Eglinton East LRT goes further and further down the wish list. And it's something that I I've supported since the beginning. It, if we'd stuck to the original schedule, it would have been built by now. And, you know, in the meantime, we're going to have a bus rapid transit line built in the fall. We have a number of express bus routes in along Eglinton, one that I pushed very hard to build from Victoria Park out to the University of Toronto Scarborough. But still, we have neighborhood improvement areas, and those are the people that need public transit the most. And an LRT would run through five neighborhood improvement areas here in Scarborough. And I would really like to see it built. But the current provincial government, I don't think, you don't hear the premier say here, the premier say LRT very often. So I'm very pessimistic about when we might see one built in Scarborough.
Okay, Paul, we're counting on you. I want to just switch topics here. And that, I'll direct it first to Mike, but then possibly Mitzi and Andrea want to weigh in. So this is a question from the public. Can someone provide clarity for the $1.2 million of funding from the city to confront anti-black racism for small businesses? So maybe, Mike, you could lead off and and Mitzi and Andrea might wish to to weigh in, or Paul, for that matter.
So this is very important. Glad you raised this, John, and Mitzi raised it as well. I think the current focus, increased focus on anti-black racism is one of the most important initiatives the city has undertaken. And it's clear that the that COVID has disproportionately impacted black people and other people that are not as well-placed in our economy as they should be. So this is an important thing for for city staff and for city council. In terms of 1.2 million, that is sort of a just an initial commitment of existing monies to redirect them to ensure that they are having some kind of impact. From my division's perspective, those monies, part of that 1.2 million comes from our division's budget. And that's going to go towards ensuring that we have strong support for black businesses. Through, we're supporting the Black Business Professional Association in in Little Jamaica on Eglinton Avenue West to help support those businesses. We're putting more money into cultural endeavors that are led by black organizations and black-led organizations like Rise and others. So our focus is to ensure that a better percent of our business support money and our culture support money is going specifically to black groups, black businesses and black-led arts organizations.
Andrea, what's your thoughts?
And so so thank you for for that question. That's a good question. I mean, that that touches me, that that touches me in in a lot of more ways than you think. And this is one of the reasons why I branched out and I started my own financial company because I understand the depth of knowledge for my culture that we need to improve on. And and financial management in 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 2020, education and finance is going to be the best success for my culture and my people in 2020 to move us forward. So while we're having a 1.2 million initial funding, my question is, it's great to hear about all of this. We would also like to hear what is in between that 1.2 million dollars, even the 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 black programs that it is being invested to. Do we have a task force in place to test if these programs are working? To test on the sustainability of these programs? It's one thing to flush monies into the system, but if we don't have the the right system set up for sustainability, I don't see this working in 10, 15 years and to make a difference for our generation, generations to come.
Okay. Before I ask, I'm, these are questions coming in from the public, which I, which I think are, as Andrea rightly said, are good questions. But I I I know Mitzi will probably want to weigh in on this, but so also will Paul. And there's a, and let me go to Paul first and then then to Mitzi because there is a follow-up question also from the public. And this person is asking for clarity on how to access the 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 funding. So Mike did start to edge towards that. Paul, are you able to respond on on that, that particular question? Then I'll go to Mitzi and I want to also ask Mitzi a question about ODSP. So let's go, let's go to Paul first.
Yeah, so anybody that wants information on the the financial programming, you can go to our city website, which is toronto.ca. Or you can also call my constituency office and and we can make sure you have the money, or sorry, not the money. We'll make sure, we'll make sure you have the information. We'll make sure you have the information.
I'm coming to you.
Did you just go around Scarborough Guildwood with a basket full of money? Is that the way?
Yes.
No, no.
No wonder. I I just didn't know that.
I'm already envisioning, I'm already envisioning taking the program from the 1.2 million dollars. I know we've, we have excellent systems in place to make sure both an application system and benchmarking the programs that the money goes to because we want to make sure they succeed. In particular, we have 33 neighborhood improvement areas across the city. So even when it was first announced, from my perspective, the 1.2 million dollars is kind of like putting your your toe in the water, testing the waters and trying to figure out what an appropriate amount of level of financial support is and how we can get it out.
Okay, well, let's let's go to Mitzi. And I'm sure you'll want to respond on that question, but there's also an additional question.
The additional question, I really want to speak to this moment because it is a very important moment for Scarborough. We do have many black people who live in Scarborough, in Scarborough Guildwood, it's about 14%. It's a very significant part of our population. And, you know, you asked earlier, John, about the unemployment rate in Scarborough. And before COVID, the unemployment rate for black youth in Scarborough was 25%. So one in four black youth in Scarborough are unemployed. It's the same for Indigenous youth as well. And so before this COVID-19 pandemic, this was a challenge and it was a problem in our community in terms of opportunities for young people. You know, at the same time, young people in Scarborough are some of the most talented and creative and imaginative people needing opportunities. So this investment by the city is extremely important, and it's important that it reaches Scarborough. So, you know, Mike, I'm hopeful that the great work you're doing in Little Jamaica, because it is fabulous, I I've been watching it online, that something like that happens in the East End as well because it is very much needed. You know, let's go to pop culture. Drake, he loves coming to Scarborough. You know, this is where the people that like the weekend are from. His mom still lives in Scarborough. And and he tweeted about a small business, he posted it on his Instagram called The Patty Stop. And The Patty Stop is located at 5506 Lawrence Ave East. And so if you want to taste And so if you want to taste an incredible Jamaican patty, go to the Patty Stop.
Where, what intersection, Mitzi, do you know?
It's, I think it's close, it's probably.
It'd have to close to Kingston Road, I would think, wouldn't it?
It's further east, further east.
I mean, it's outside of the riding? It's outside of the riding, Mit?
No, 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 the best food's always in Scarborough Guildwood.
Yeah. There's also, there's another one that I go to often, it's called Patty Times. And that's, that's just right across from the hospital and on Lawrence as well. But what I'm, what I'm trying to point to is, is that there's so much creativity that is happening, it needs to be supported. And we have to recognise that anti-black racism is, is real, it's systemic and, and has created those barriers. And at this time, where there is an understanding of that, we have to work hard to remove those barriers. You know, in the recession of the 1990s, I was a student at U of T and, and there weren't any jobs for, you know, similar to what's happening now for, for young people. So I applied for a provincial government programme for youth entrepreneurs, wrote a business plan and I started a company in Scarborough. And I got a $5,000 investment really from the province that went into helping me to start that company. And I have to say that sometimes there are people who are around us in our communities, they have the ideas, they have the energy, the work ethic, they just need that boost and that hand up. And, and I, I believe that we've got to make sure that we, we provide those programmes that can give people the start that they need, particularly our young entrepreneurs.
Okay, we've, we've only got a few minutes left and I do want to get a couple more questions from the public in. One of our more attentive members from the public has said that it's at Port Union and Lawrence. So we all know where that is. Here we're, here we're promoting something outside of the riding, I don't know, that's a good idea.
It's great teamwork, great teamwork, Team Scarborough, yes.
Scarborough, Scarborough to the, is the centre of the universe, as we all know. For, this is a question for Paul and Mitzi. Given the increase in people improperly assembling during changing phases, are there plans to have a specialised task force to make sure that businesses are continuing to be safe? So we, we haven't got very, very long, so maybe two minutes each from Paul and Mitzi. And frankly, frankly, Mike and Andrea can chime in on this, so they feel so inclined.
Yeah, I'll be very concise with municipal licensing and standard staff. They're really only giving out tickets for businesses that are repeat offenders. We're just trying to go in and trying to make sure that people understand the laws and the bylaws and what they should be doing and how their employees should be acting or interacting with the public. So that's the approach that we're taking.
I think people have to remember that, you know, the virus is still spreading and if we see a uptick or a second wave, the risk is that we could go right back where we started and we don't want that. So we've got to follow the public health guidelines and the public health rules. We know that Toronto is very close to moving into stage three, which will mean that, you know, gatherings can take place indoors. It, you know, restaurants will be open, in-room dining with very strict physical distancing. And, and we know that gatherings indoors will increase to 50 people and outdoors 100 people max. What we have to do is follow those guidelines and follow those rules so that we don't see a rapid circulation of the virus to the extent that it puts public health at risk and we have to go back to where we started. So let's continue to, to follow those rules as much as possible. Yes, we need to enforce the rules, but let's follow them.
If you, if you need an example of places going backwards, look at Florida or Texas or Arizona where they opened up, they weren't very careful to begin with, they opened up quite quickly and then now they're paying a huge penalty. And so Mitzi and Paul are, are quite right. Mike or Andrea, do you want to weigh in on that question at all?
Actually, I am going to challenge Mike on the platform here right now. I think what we need to do, and, and this just came to mind, and that's how we move at SBA, our task force, we move like, like lightning. So, so Mike, I think on our next webinar session coming up in September, I think we will be in phase three. Let's, let's meet and talk about how can we help our businesses to follow the safety guidelines and bring back the confidence with our consumers? Because consumers will go into these shops and quickly rebuild the revenue and help the economic recovery of Scarborough.
Go Scarborough.
What do you say, Mike?
Said yes.
Awesome.
Yeah, I think he ducked on that, Andrea.
We're recording this, Mike.
I totally agree with it, I said yes, let's meet in September, I'll meet in August, I'll meet in July.
Yes, yes, absolutely, thank you.
The, the last question goes to Mitzi. And then I will just ask each of you to sort of summarise in 30 seconds and then we'll, we'll close off. So Mitzi, very briefly, can Mitzi illuminate why many may feel ODSP is significantly less support than its federal counterpart?
Right, so I think this is a very fair question. We've seen with the introduction of SERB that people who are on income supports, Ontario Works and ODSP, you know, there's an inadequacy there. The province did provide an emergency amount of $200. And I believe for, for, for ODSP, it was $250 if I, if I remember my numbers correctly. But people had to apply for that through their caseworker. And, and then once they, once they've done that, it was automatically renewed. But the, the sad part is that it's coming to an end this month, whereas of course, we've already talked about the fact that SERB and other wage subsidies and interventions are continuing because the pandemic is still with us. So this is something that we have to continue to, 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 you know, ask the provincial government to make sure that we are responding to people who are in the most vulnerable situations during this pandemic. You know, one of the things that Paul, John and I have done with others in Scarborough is, is food security. And, you know, we've gone to the CARES programme that's being run at U of T, Global Medic and the city of Toronto. There are other programmes that are in our community as well and that's because people don't have enough income on their own and many people are struggling. So, so it's a fair question. It, more needs to be done in this area and I'll continue to advocate on, on behalf of individuals who need that type of income support so that they're not forgotten during this pandemic.
Okay, this has been a fairly lively interaction and I think it actually has, has fulfilled the expectations that Mitzi and Paul and I had. And I just wanted to give a, a last few seconds to Andrea and to Mike to do a, a bit of a summary, 30 seconds or something of that nature and then, and then we'll close off because we are past our, our time. So Andrea went first and Mike went second, so let's reverse the order. Mike, what are your thoughts in 30 seconds or less on, on Go Team Scarborough?
A few key points. First of all, John, thank you and Paul and Mitzi for inviting me and having this topic. I think it's important. Two, I want to plug a programme that was not ours, but both the province and feds have teamed up with the Royal Bank of Canada, RBC, on Canada United, which is to boost local shopping by using social media and then pinpointing the last full weekend in August, the 28th, 29th, I think, for shop local. And that's my last point I wanted to make is patronise your, your local stores, they need your business, they're the heart of your community, please get out and patronise your local stores in Scarborough especially.
Especially in Scarborough. And we'll even take in people from North York, just as a special offer, yeah. Andrea, Andrea, what do you, what's your thought?
Okay, so that's the challenge, I cannot speak for 30 seconds, oh, I'm going to begin, okay. John, Anthony and Mitzi, like, thank you so much for having me on my first live town hall meeting. So you have christened me, so thank you so much. And a couple of points. Number one, I, I love to challenge because that's how we get moving. And so I want to challenge all the stakeholders in Scarborough with Scarborough Business Association and SCRO, our, our partner. And just to give a shout out to SCRO, we, we have been merged and working on a broadband issue, supporting the, the internet issues that our residents and our, our commercial businesses are experiencing in Scarborough. And so that letter is, is ready to go. We want piece of the pie of that $500 million that was announced by Premier Ford. Let's not forget about our Scarborough. We want to encourage businesses to come into Scarborough and not have to pay extra to run cables, special cables, to run their business. And now we have all of the technology that we need the businesses to do to move on in phase three. And if we're having internet, internet issues, we are from ground zero with challenges. So that's another topic for another day, going to leave it there. I just want to say thank you to the community for always supporting Scarborough Business Association. We are a very strong community. As, as I said, I want to meet at a roundtable. Here's the name of the roundtable. Economic Task Force Roundtable for Scarborough. Let's make Scarborough that unique place where everybody can come together and we can be stronger together. We need it now more than ever. And so please visit our SBA website. We now start the VLOG programme where businesses are sharing their challenges through COVID-19 and how they got out of the challenge and their reopening success. So I thank you.
Thank you, Andrea, you're right about the 30 second thing, but I don't think you're unique or alone in, in trying to summarise things in 30 seconds. But we, we have kind of blown through our time here, so I'm not going to challenge either Mitzi or Paul with trying to summarise in 30 seconds, but I'm just going to.
I can do it in 15.
Oh, well then, then Mitzi will do it, yeah, yeah. No, I'll, if you're really desperate, I'll, because I'm such a nice chair, I'll let you go with 15 seconds, but then I'm going to put you on mute. So Paul, you want to do 15 seconds or no?
Sure, I just want to thank Andrea for all your hard work and dedication with the Scarborough Business Association, Michael for all your leadership with economic development of the city of Toronto, my provincial and federal colleagues, Mitzi Hunter and John McKay. And everybody stay safe and well and follow the rules. Thank you.
Mitzi, the rule is 15 seconds.
Yes, I just want to say a huge thank you to Andrea for your leadership at the Scarborough Business Association. Keep doing what you're doing, it's wonderful and, and you're really an example of, of turning this very challenging situation into an opportunity for the association. And, and Mike, I, I just think that you're, you're so strong in terms of your understanding of the fundamentals of the business community and we want all of that talent and focus on Scarborough. So that's, that's our, our pitch to you.
Yes.
And, and thank you so much, John, you are a wonderful host, you made this hour fly by, it was.
Yes, yes.
And, and Paul, thank you so much. I think, I think you promised us an LRT, that's our story and we're sticking to it. And I just want to thank all of, all of those dedicated people who watch our virtual town hall, this is, I believe, our fourth one and thank you so much for tuning in. We will continue to do this forum and make information available to you and stay as close as we possibly can. Stay safe and have a great rest of your summer.
Have, have you ever noticed that politicians have run on sentences? And that they have conjunction, and it's conjunctive sentences? So there's about 15 ands in the middle of one sentence. So I'm, I'm really pleased that I gave everybody 15 seconds. With that, thank you, this has been quite lively, lots of fun. Our special guests have been Andrea Hizzell and Mike Williams. We appreciate your knowledge and your willingness to, to interact with us. And I, I consider this to be one of our more successful efforts to reach out. And stay tuned because we're going to do it again. Don't know just exactly when and don't know exactly what, but we are going to do this again.
I think our next one is education.
Is it education?
It's education.
Okay, there we are, okay. Okay, take care everyone, stay safe. Thank you very much for tuning in.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, thank you.